Wednesday, obviously, though folks can still provide it in general public comment, but we will have plenty of time set aside for that then. In terms of written public comment, normally, we say 24 hours in advance for written public comment, but because of the volume and the ability of commissioners to be able to read it before they come, we're going to ask that all written public comment be submitted by Monday, the 29th at 5:00. And then that means Robin can upload it. I will tell you, the process of taking all of these emails, sorting it, making sure that we don't have duplicates, getting it scanned properly and uploaded to our system isn't a snap of the fingers. So it takes time to do that, and we're envisioning that that'll take some time. So our plan is to, if we're going to ask for an extra day to be able to upload that and so that commissioners have time to read it, because that's what everybody wants, is for you to have read public comment by the time the meeting comes. I'd also say I do anticipate that there would be additional staff information that, I mean, normally, I set the agenda tomorrow, so it's going to be a very tight turnaround. So I would say there's probably going to be some things that will be added late to that agenda in terms of staff response. And then if there is staff response that is brought to the meeting on the first, we will add it after the fact and have copies at the meeting, too, as well.
If I can-
Go ahead, Sandy.
Actually, if I can say something really quickly, those of you who have sent public comment and don't see it yet in the packet here, that's why that's going to be in the packet for the first. So there are quite a lot that's come in since January 22nd, when it lasted the Planning Commission, but that will all be reflected in the next meeting. Thank you, Sandy.
Yes, and I wanted to confirm that communications from the public are going through the county's portal, not through the project website at this point.
Yeah, so it's publiccomment@douglascountyks.org. So that's, and it's on our website, but written public comment can be submitted. That just want to also just state that these are revised wind energy regulations. We have existing energy, wind energy applications on book, and then this team. I just, I'm going to go ahead and introduce you, because I know Sandy's going to get started. We have County Council John Bullock here, we've got our Director of Zoning and Codes, Tanya Voit, Becky Pepper with Lawrence Nichols County Planning, and Sandy Day, who has been the lead planner on these regulations.
Claire, you have applications on file, I think you have, we have regulations on-
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say application? I meant regulations. We have regulations on file, we have no applications on file.
And Jill, if you don't mind, I had raised the curtains earlier when I was office-ing in here alone, and now they're watching our screen.
No, I got Claire, so we'll pull those down.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy Day with Planning Office. This has definitely been a team project that has included the Planning Office over at Sixth and Mass, the planning team here, as well as a number of other groups and organizations that have been reached out. As Sarah mentioned, we do have existing regulations in the county zoning. This was an action that was initiated by the Planning Commission, so there's not an applicant, if you will, and this all came out of the work for the solar and what, a recognition that the existing regulations were very weak in terms of this particular land use. So the direction and the drive was to update those regulations, bring in parity to what was adopted for the solar, and then kind of move forward from there. A couple of quick things of note in the existing regulations, there is no restriction on height. And then the setback is set in the current regulations at 110% of the height of the structure. So if it's 600 feet, it would be 110%. If it's 1,000 feet, it would be 110%. The other thing that the existing regulations do in today's regulation is it's measured from dwelling units, and that was a particular discussion, both for staff, for the Ad-Hoc Committee, and for the Planning Commission. And we'll dig into that here pretty quickly. I know there's a lot to cover, so, there's a lot of slides, I don't know if they got uploaded into your packets. I'm going to fly through some of these very quickly, and then we'll stop and pause on some of the other ones. This is a land use, as I mentioned, that is currently permitted in Douglas County. We have the wind turbine or the energy conversion systems that are kind of small-scale, that are accessory to a farm or residence or a business, and those are permitted basically across the board. It is these commercial-scale projects that require certain special zoning districts, the AG1, the GB, the IL, the IG, and the BSC. And I apologize, I haven't committed all of these newer zoning districts to memory, so I'll lean on Becky if we have to dig into those particularly. But all of these things require a conditional use permit, so they're not permitted by right. And again, we're talking about the commercial scale wind energy projects. Whoops. Okay, so this is the working premise. This was the original working premise, and it stayed pretty true throughout the discussions that staff had, ad hoc and the Planning Commission, and then also bringing forward this parity with the solar regulations and having a much more rigorous set of standards to work from. We've had the number of meetings that staff has been engaged with and many other people have been engaged with. The first, I would say, the first round that resulted in Draft 1 was predominantly a staff exercise. That was the direction, kind of from the Planning Commission, gave some updates, and that became kind of the working document that everybody knew about. Planning Commission, as they started digging through that, really felt like it was a big lift to try and do that just at the Planning Commission. They appointed an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee formed, they are a four-member board of the full commission. They did a number of different things, having dedicated listening sessions on very specific topics throughout that process that helped both educate and form some of the recommendations that the ad hoc committee developed, and that became Draft 2. And that is Draft 2 that went to the Planning Commission. As the Planning Commission made changes as the full body, that became what we refer to as Draft 3. That is what's posted, and that is what will come to you for action on the first. Some of the things that we did, this is a legislative item, we do not typically do a large public engagement project, but given the number of questions that we got, we did backtrack and create a dedicated wind website. We held a number of different public meetings. We did some polling to get public input on some particular thoughts and processes, and all of that informed what those regulations looked like. And then the ad hoc committee took that, kind of that Draft 2 out on the road, and they dedicated four specific meetings throughout the county to share what that proposed regulation looked like, to give people, again, this opportunity to see it, to ask questions about it, and kind of go from there. So those were some of the things that we did on that particular piece. I've divided this presentation into sections, and then we'll kind of pause at each section, and then we'll kind of go in. Hopefully, I'm going to answer many questions, and then Becky's going to help me take notes for the questions that we may need to do some more follow-up to. Okay, existing regulations, they're fairly narrowly drawn, they're also very vague. One of the things that we did with the proposed regulations is really expand, but also reorganize those regulations within this project. One of the things that we did in terms of also the organization and substantially strengthening them, there's a new section in the code that did not previously exist, and that is performance standards. Performance standards are key to assessing a project over the lifetime of the project. How does it perform? Is it meeting what it was designed to meet? Is it designed to, is it operating in a way that follows all of the approvals that were associated with that project? So that was a very important change to the regulations that we were working through. Everything else, as you can see, those sections, the reorganization that happens in the code, clarifying processes and expanding and clarifying language throughout the project. Definitions became a very critical piece of this, and a couple, I'm not going to go through all of them, there's a couple that I want to highlight, participating landowner and non-participating landowner. Those became very important as we were talking about the project. A project like this covers a lot of land area, it will incorporate probably a number of different property owners. Those owners that have infrastructure, turbines, routes, lay-down yards, whatever those components are, that's going to make up the project, and that's going, those property owners will be participating. Those property owners that don't have a contract, haven't waived any rights, that are not participating, are non-participating landowners, and it became important to make those very clear distinctions. Occupied structure was something that we spent a lot of time talking about, both at the staff level, the ad hoc, and with the Planning Commission. This is substantially expanded with this regulation of- Occupied structure covers not only dwelling units, but places of assembly, so that can be schools and churches that we heard a lot of concern about, but it could also be barns, where people are working. So this became a critical term, because it forms a basis on how we're evaluating where these turbines will be located in proximity to some of these other things. So hang on to that definition, please. Some of the other things that we did, the earlier drafts of the project, staff really was looking at using kind of industry language, so we were talking apples-to-apples when we were talking with applicants. The community and the public really struggled with that, because we're talking about meters. So we really heard that and came back with, we're going to use plainer language, we're going to use more common measurements, so we're using feet instead of meters. We're talking about total height, measured to the tip of the blade at its apex, and not measuring, you know, things like hub height and those kinds of things. And we'll still get that information, and we'll still evaluate it, but the critical number for height and setback will be this total structural component. Okay, qualified professional and extraordinary events were also two definitions that we require. Any study that is required per the regulations, so that is on the application side, must be prepared by a qualified professional. I can't prepare a drainage study, I don't have that credential. I would be able to receive that study and say, does that person who's signing this report, do they have the credentials, is that part of the study? And we would be able to evaluate that. Staff would be able to look at those studies and say, okay, what are the assumptions that are in the beginning of this study? Do they make sense? Do they, do they pass just a common sense test? If we start finding that some of these things are way off the mark, the regulations are designed for staff, the Planning Commissioner or the County Commission, to request qualified professional on our behalf, so on the community's behalf, to be able to assess these different studies. Throughout that extraordinary event, this is one that we talked a lot about, how do you define extraordinary event? Is it extraordinary at what level? But we also wanted to be explicit that extraordinary event could be something that happens to one turbine, or it could be the facility-wide impact. So we tried to make those kinds of clarifications. One of the things that we did with this piece was also to pull out the Pwex, so those are those personal scale pieces, and this was really, the original regulation or the existing regulations kind of roll those personal ones into the definition, and that can present problems for staff. So by putting it in its own section, really gives county staff more direction and ability to respond to those individual requests, if and when we get them, through the building permit process, as you would any kind of accessory structure. And then there's certain standards that go along with those. So that was, that was a discussion that we had at the staff level predominantly, really didn't have a lot of public comment on those personal scale projects, so hopefully, we feel like we got that one right. The other type are those commercial scale, and that's where the bulk of that discussion goes, and that's where our focus is, that's where your focus is going to be requested. So those are the two different types of projects. We really don't have a community scale, that was something that has been brought up. I do have significant questions whether or not that's even allowed at our state level. There's nothing in these regulations that would prevent a community scale project coming forward. It would have to meet all of the same kind of documentation and operational and decommissioning standards as a commercial scale would, but I think we would be able to, through the conditional use permit process, be able to assess those things at that scale if a developer came forward and said, I want to do something for a rural subdivision. And that's about the only example I can really think of where we would be looking at kind of that middle scale. Okay, so this is, just very quickly, some of the things about those individual wind turbines, in terms of what those design standards would be. And then this really hearkens back to the fact that it is permitted through the building permit process, and it is expressly exempt from that conditional use permit process. Okay, I'm going to take a little pause here. Do you have any questions about definitions or Pwex so far? One of my commercial breaks.
Thank you, Sandy. This is Commissioner Kelly. You talked a lot about qualified professional, but I didn't see that as a definition. Is it there, and I missed it? Oh, there it is, yep, there it is.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to move on.
I have-
Do you have another question?
I may save that one.
Okay. So Cwex, we talk about these things, the individual turbine, we talk about them as a project, and we talk about them as a project boundary. So that's just a little preview. These are kind of the sections that get into this, we'll talk about those key considerations. That became the framework for everything that we do. The key considerations were in the original regulations, and we'll talk about how they've been expanded through the recommendation from the Planning Commission. And if you see something in a key consideration, you will see it somehow addressed in the contents, you will see it somehow addressed in some of the design standards, performance, processing revisions, and through that abandonment. So that, that's kind of the organization piece of this. We touched almost every one of these things throughout the process, either at the staff level, at the ad hoc, or the Planning Commission. You can see, the ones highlighted in yellow are kind of new to the regulations from what we have today. Okay, contents of appli-
Nice topic. The yellow ones you said are new from what we have in our, in the Draft 2?
In the adopted regulations that are on the books today.
Okay, so different from the 2017?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Yes. Okay, contents of application. We spent a lot of time on contents of application, both at the staff level and with the ad hoc committee. Applications and the contents of applications are immensely important, as you saw through the recent solar application, and really any land use, making sure that we have the right and correct data to even start the process. If we do not have a complete application, we are not going to be advancing that to the Planning Commission or to ultimately this body unless an applicant is making a request for a waiver, and then they're going to have to get through that justification, and that gets more into processing. So this is just a quick list of all of those contents. Each one of these things has a whole laundry list of things that go with it. Some things we're used to seeing, such as a stormwater management plan, you see, we see, at the staff level, we see those, and we rely heavily on our engineering staff to be able to evaluate those kinds of projects. If they define that they need help or assistance, then that's something we'll have to talk about, and I saw that as one of your questions, so we'll circle back to that, put a pin in it, we will come back to it. Okay, I'm not going to go over every piece of the detail, we're going to do this kind of high-level, but general application information, this got at some of those discussions about who can apply for these things. Is this, reputable company maybe not the right term, but do we have a company that has a history and a knowledge base of being able to come forward with these kinds of projects? Be able to evaluate some of that. A concept plan, we see those with conditional use permits. What are they asking? What are those improvements? Where are they going to be located? How are they going to be located? A lighting plan-
Let's actually stop you at the first one there, the, about the applicant. I think that's been something that, it's been hard to understand, like, how do we evaluate? What are the criteria for evaluating, and what power do we really have there? And we don't have to answer that right now, but that's just something that's been kind of in the community conversation, and I think in my head, too.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Lighting plan, lighting is going to be touched on a couple of different pieces, certainly the lighting of the turbines. That is going to get into the Federal Aviation Administrative purview pretty quickly. There are federal laws and rules about how that's going to be looking. As, as I understand it, with new laws, new towers constructed are going to have to have new technology that these things are not lit until the plane approaches at a certain level and a certain distance, they come on, you have that equipment, and then we go from there. You look like you have a question about that.
You know, I have lots of questions. I sent you the first two pages, I now have three pages, so I can hold those until you've gotten, gotten through most of your presentation, or I can tackle them as we come in.
Let's hang for just a second.
You got it.
Okay. The other kind of lighting would be if you have a lay-down yard, if you have an office, you know, those would be subject to the same lighting standards that are in the zoning code today. So there are going to be places in the regulations that cross-reference other pieces of existing zoning code that there wasn't a need to reinvent the wheel. We have good regulation about lighting for structure, so we point to that in the code. Another example of that we see is where the conditional use permit process, it says it will go through that. Now, not only does it say that you go through the conditional use process, it says you're going to have to also do an extraordinary notice, and you're going to have to do all these other things. So that's just those two examples. Visual impact assessment and noise impact assessment, we talked a lot with the ad hoc committee about this kind of study. There are examples in the packet, there are references on the website, if you really want to dig into those and read what those things look like. Very quickly, kind of, this is an example, actually, from a coastal project, and I am deliberately using something that is not local, not Midwest, because I think this really helps to kind of graphically show kind of the pieces that we're talking about. What's the project area? What's it going to look like? What's our existing condition? What are the photo simulations going to be required with that? And through, through the application process, we identify those kinds of things. But there is also the ability for staff, through the review process, to say, okay, not only do we have this list, we have knowledge of a local concern or a local issue, that we can also add that to the list of assessment that has to be considered for the project. So this isn't, this isn't saying yes or no. This is saying, this is the documentation they have to provide. If it's incomplete, we're not going to move forward until it's complete. Same thing with noise. The ad hoc committee spent a lot of time talking about noise. They got to a level of understanding that, I don't know that even I fully have 100% confident, yes, I can describe to you what Puritone is, but a sound engineer can, and a sound engineer has certain professional credentials that they will have to demonstrate in that study. And it's going to be easy enough for staff to look at that and say, hmm, where's your credential? But this could also be one of those studies where staff is going to want to work with a qualified professional on behalf of the county, on behalf of the community, to say, are the assumptions right? You know, what is included in this document? Environmental impact assessment. Environmental impact assessment is a title. So one of the questions was, does this include federal environmental impact? My answer to that would be, if a project has pieces of land or components that are subject to federal regulatory review, then yes, it has to meet those federal components. What we've done in this section is to say, you're going to have to look at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the land-based energy guidelines, so we call out a specific tool and reference for being able to cite and locate these kinds of projects. The Migratory Bird Treaty Act, endangered and threatened species, this whole list of things, and as you keep moving down this environmental impact, we talk about not just land and birds and animals and bats and insects, we also start talking about wastes, electromagnetic fields, fire risks, the Kansas Natural Resource Planner Guide, archaeological reconnaissance survey, cumulative impacts of these projects within the area. So we are also covering our cultural and historic assets within the community in this kind of documentation. So we get from the federal level down to the local level, and probably down to the specific property level in these kinds of assessments. So this will be a significant study that will occupy a lot of staff time as we look at that, or perhaps our qualified professional helping us. Okay, let me jump back here. Okay, so I'm not keeping up with my own pages. If I did print out hard copies for you, so if you're looking at those hard copies, this environmental impact piece is basically pages 13 through 15 of your document. And then that earlier piece, I think that is around pages 8 through 18 is all of the contents, but page 8 is really kind of that list. Okay, so we talked about that. Okay, so this is, again, that list, but really just kind of starting back to, starting at item G, so the stormwater management plan, the traffic study and road maintenance agreements, we would be working with county engineering, as well as the township, and KDOT as necessary to address those kinds of components. In the provisions section, and that is where we start to outline the length of a project. Maximum approval of that conditional use permit would be 25 years. If an applicant wanted to continue powering this project past 25 years, they will have to come forward with a new conditional use permit. Why that's important is that technology changes, regulations change. So if there is change in that technology, change in 25 years to this regulation, that application would have to be subject to the new conditional use permit, whatever those regulations are. Now, how we deal with projects when codes have changed over time, we have something that's called non-conforming, so we would have to, at some point, think about how are we going to manage non-conforming uses? What is the plan to bring maybe an aging turbine into compliance with whatever those current design standards are at that time? Don't have a specific answer for that at this point. Okay, so this is just kind of that quick summary of the contents of application. It must be complete before we move it forward. It must be complete before we move it forward. We struggle with that every day, and that's kind of why I harp on it. That was a discussion that we had at the staff level quite a bit. That qualified professional piece is also very key, being able to make sure that we have a reasonableness to that. The county zoning and codes director does have some authority within this, and they can have some approval of that. Is that individual meeting that qualified professional? If in their opinion that they're not meeting that, then we're going to be having a conversation with the applicant about that. Independent third party. We talk about that throughout the code, where and how we activate that trigger for when those things are needed. So that is a critical part of all of this. And then just kind of finally, when it comes to a conditional use permit, we're talking about the rules. What are the rules? If conditional use permit comes in the application, it is the applicant's burden to justify and prove they've met all of these conditions, that there's all of the need. A conditional use permit is a discretionary land use. So there's nothing in the code that says you must approve it. They have the burden to make that demonstration. So I want to make that clear. That's what a conditional use permit is. Okay. That covers contents. Okay. Want to hold them or you want to go? All right. Okay.
That's up to you.
I think since we're probably.
Sandy, I guess I want to. The last comment you just made about a conditional use, though, the county commissioners in a quasi judicial setting are bound by law and legal statute in terms of how they evaluate that use. So I just think it's probably important to say that the commissioners cannot act arbitrarily or capriciously in the review if there are regulations that outline it. So it's, I just think that's probably important to say in here. It's not like the commissioners could just say, I don't know if I'm saying this at all right, but maybe you could put a little shade on that comment.
Sure. Yeah. That is exactly correct. So if you're going, if you have an application come forward and you are wanting to deny that request, you would be looking at the findings of fact. Where has the applicant failed to demonstrate that they have met the conditions and provisions of the conditional use permit? It's not an issue of, we don't like you, we don't like this use. You know, if it were this applicant, we could approve it. It's none of those things, and I've never seen this body do that. But yes, to clarify what Sarah's getting at, to do something like that would be arbitrary and capricious, and that would be, John would probably be having a conversation with all of us about that. But this is really, my intent of making that statement is that there's a body of information that has to be provided. So, you know, just handing a site plan in and saying, this is our project, that's not going to be enough.
I have some questions that would probably fit under the application contents. Should I go through some of those? Or do you want to get through the rest of your presentation?
Let's go ahead and do them here.
Okay. So I did these kind of in order of what was in our packet in terms of the recommended changes for draft three.
Okay.
So I will hope that I can find where they came from. I'm not as organized with it as I would like to be. Under section O provisions. So on number two, it talks about prescribed burning of land only after appropriate contact with county offices, et cetera. I just want to make sure that that doesn't in any way hamper the landowner's ability to do prescribed burns as we allow them in the county. And it was, it was just hard to tell if that was like there was an additional burden than what a landowner would normally have the right to do. So that was just a curiosity. And I can get that to you in writing, too, Sandy.
Yeah.
And then in number three, it had the agreement on file with County Public Works, KDOT, and township, and any affected township roads. It should be just townships, the affected townships. It's already talking about roads there. Under visual impacts, under three, it has, for Blade Glint, it says it should be avoided, but I don't know what avoided means or avoided how. So that's just a question.
Okay.
Maybe we can tackle when we have more time. And I think I've answered kind of my second question on that, like, who counts as non-participating? So, and I think I've got that now with the further explanation that you had there. So a person who may or may not sign up to have a turbine but is maybe allowed it to come closer than the 2,500 feet as proposed or something would be then participating because they would be getting paid in some way or another. So that, and that, there was a difference in Blade Glint versus participating and non-participating. Participating and non-participating, it does make me wonder, the whole project area has to be allowed within AG1. I mean, you know, our land is quite a mosaic of different uses. But you may have a person that has a home or land on AG2 that is expecting to be participating, not in terms of hosting a turbine, but in terms of hosting some of that setback or something. And I just wonder if that, if the way we have our regs allows for that or doesn't allow for that. It just helps me understand.
Oh, yeah. I would say in that particular case, if we read that really strictly, then we would need to either modify the land use table, which was not part of this, or look at some additional interpretations of what that would mean.
Is that something that would have to happen in the regulations? Or is that something that would have to happen within the CUP or in addition to all of that?
I think it would probably be in addition to both.
Okay.
CUP and text.
Okay.
Because I think that falls into the land use table component.
Okay.
Which we did not modify with this.
Under noise management, there's something that says about a sustained period of time. So if something makes noise for a sustained period of time, how is that measured and what does that mean?
Sure.
And in terms of the list of possible mitigations for a noise that shows up for a sustained period of time, I think one of those ought to be maintenance. Because as I've kind of traveled to other counties and asked things like, what are issues do you have? What does that sound like? What does that look like? What happens to fix it? And some of those would be.
Yes, absolutely. That would be one of the opportunities to mitigate.
Under wildlife, the environmental impact assessment, and you did make mention of this, like that, but that's usually a federal term. And I think what we're looking for is it's a local document. So I was just curious if it's causing confusion for us to use a term that's specific to a federal process when we're actually going to accomplish that in-house and it's triggered by our own processes and not just by if it impacts federal land.
Get that one.
On electromagnetic fields and talks about, I didn't put the whole thing in my notes here, but interference with cell service, et cetera. But how is that interference determined? So is that something that would be experienced by a neighbor and reported? But a lot of things interfere with our county or cell service, et cetera. Like, how is that determined? And what should nearby residents do if they experience a change? Like, what's their, what empowers them? I'll hold the others and let you get back. Or I can, sorry, look to my fellow commissioners for, all right.
We're collecting questions right now, so.
And I'll have more, but I'll let you carry on. Thank you.
Okay. Just real quickly about the electromagnetic field, two things about that. This is probably something that county staff is dealing with today. We certainly have, if it's telecommunication related, that reporting goes back to the FCC or the provider or however that is working today. This is probably one of the harder pieces for staff to either verify or kind of compel a requirement. This language is in the code today, and I think it probably would be a struggle for any of us. You know, what's causing it? You know, where is that source of that problem coming from? So that's probably something that we're going to have to talk about. County zoning staff and planning team have all been having this conversation that these regulations are not the end of the work. The next step very probably that needs to happen is we need to probably develop some procedural manuals to use so that we can have ready to go, how do we respond to these particular things? That would not necessarily be zoning regulatory language in the zoning code. It would be a procedural manual that we, the staff could be able to use to, how do we respond to exactly these kinds of things? The code gives us kind of, these things should happen. How are we going to do that? And those are definitely some processes we're going to have to develop. So that is kind of on our work, lists of things to do. Somehow we'll get that done, depending on what your directions are for the regulations.
Sandy, this is Commissioner Reed. Excuse me. I thank you for that. And to kind of pull on Commissioner Kelly's earlier question just about the definition of qualified professionals. I'm curious if you've had much conversation yet or just kind of maybe have a pin in the idea that some sort of flushing out of what types of specific credentials, qualifications, licensures related to the qualified professionals? I'm just curious if you've, and I know a little bit of it is, there's sort of a wide net to cast. Perhaps there's a lot of things that staff could determine based on the application itself. So it's so circumstantial, what you would want to seek help from a qualified professional. But anyway, just trying, I think that's something that eventually, I will have questions about, and I expect the public to also to understand how it is that we are deciding who the qualified professional is and what the relevant credentials are.
Right. So when we talk about qualified professionals, there will be two components to that. One, the applicant's application documentation. Has it been professionally prepared? It's not a, you know, Sandy taking notes and here's my study. It is something that is duly prepared by, you know, a sound engineer that has the, I always want to say NICS, and I know that's not right, but has that credential. And we can identify those things and say, or equivalent, you know? So we can do some of those things for a lot of this work. In some of the environmental pieces, we spent a lot of time talking with Kansas Department of Parks and Wildlife and their team in requiring that this information, they would be one of the reviewers of this application, that if an application come in, we'd send that off to Kansas Parks and Rec and wait for them to give us, you know, their findings back and kind of go from there. So we would be working with those parallel state agencies to be able to do those kinds of things as well. So yes, I think those ideas are percolating. Do I have them written down? No, not yet.
And I wanted to make the note because I think the procedural manual seems certainly smart and like a good long-term plan for staff capacity and efficiency. And so a piece of that seems like just flushing out a little bit more who and when we would be leveraging that as a resource.
Yeah.
And I guess I'd add, Sandy, like, that's already in regulation. Like, we use experts in a variety of other areas of regulation, and we somehow managed to do it without having all of their certifications listed out. So I think we can do some of that, but I don't want anyone to think that we don't, we use sound engineers on other projects. We've used, you know, all kinds of different professionals in those roles. So I don't know that we have to, I mean, I just think if we don't have it at this stage, staff can do that.
Yeah. And then that also helps staff define when we're going to be using that independent third party. So qualified professional, independent third party. Independent third party would also need to meet our qualification expectations for them to help us. So, and presumably not have a conflict with an applicant. Okay. So I'm going to set that aside for a minute. Okay. I'm going to jump back into presentation mode here. Design standards. So this is, this is the exciting part. Design standards, we want to make a distinction between design standard and performance standards. The design standards are going to be, where is it located? How tall is it going to be? Where is it going to be setback from? Versus the performance standards, as I mentioned before, is really about the long-term operation of the project. So how it looks. Within this section, we talk about setback, permitted height, clearance, anti-cline. Anything that you see emboldened in this section is something that is either new or has been substantially expanded from what we have today. Okay. So in this section, particularly, let's see here, and I can direct you to, hold on, catch up with my notes. And I apologize for all the color changes, but it was helping me get track of where I was at. Okay. So we are on page 19 of your draft regulations. What you'll see is this information in tabular form. It is also in text form just above the table in there. So this is where you start to see some significant changes between the existing regulation and the proposed draft that came to you from the planning commission. First and foremost, we are measuring things from the property line. That is how we measure every other land use in Douglas County, measured from the property line. And at the staff level, we thought that was a very important change. It's not getting tricky with how we're looking at something. And then this is also when we talk about, we're measuring from occupied structure, not just from dwelling, the way it's in today's regulation. The planning commission's recommendation expanded that setback to 2,500 feet. That was, that was in response to the public and some other concerns that various commissions had, and then also wanting to move this forward to this body. So that was definitely a compromise to that. Couple of the other things that you'll see, the county boundary line is also set at 2,500 feet. Now, the county boundary line is also a property line, so that still applies. And what that does is really give some protections to those adjacent counties that do not have or prohibit this kind of land use. We're talking roughly a half a section in that dimension. Should it go further? That's an evaluation that can be taken up with a specific application if that comes forward. Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks has some specific managed properties, and from any of those identified properties that would be identified in the environmental impact study, that would have a three-mile setback. Something that is not in here that says, there shall be a three-mile setback from any incorporated city. That has never been part of the regulations. That is not part of the regulations. That has been a rumor and a myth throughout this project. City of Lawrence, City of Baldwin, City of LaCompton, nobody's exempt. It can be outside those city limits if that's what the project looks like and that's what gets approved. There's no automatic protection for those particular things.
Sandy, can I ask a question about the wildlife and parks? So this is a state standard that they ask all counties to abide by as the three miles? Or was it a conversation?
That, it's, from them, it's a recommendation. In this regulation, it's a requirement. So.
Did they say what the specific purpose of that is? Is it migratory birds? Is it endangered species? Like, what's their justification for the three miles? I'm just curious if that should apply elsewhere.
I think it could be a lot of different things. I think that's what they found to be a buffer that was probably most conducive for most situations. So, you know, could some particular animal or flower or something be more tolerant of a turbine being closer? Possibly. Could some particular thing need or demand a larger setback? Possibly. I don't know that I can get into any more detail than, you know, where that three mile came out of. Like I said, they are basically in a recommending category. The way this is in this code, it becomes a requirement.
I guess my reason for being curious about that in particular. I guess my reason for being curious about that in particular is, is wanting to know what's behind it because we also have like, you know, Lone Star Lake and others that are county-held properties, but maybe serve the same, you know, biological purpose, ecological purpose as a state-held property. And so that's why I'm curious.
So, in that instance, if we had an application that came forward where we had a county lake, but wasn't necessarily in part of that inventory of the Kansas inventory, you could make a recommendation that that entity has that same biological importance, that that setback should also be applied to that particular thing. We would be trying to identify those things in a pre-submitting meeting with an applicant. We would be requesting that kind of information possibly in all of this study work. It would be something that would probably come out in the public hearing process. Planning commission could recommend, this body could, could add a condition and a conditional use permit to that. If this body wanted to amend this table and add certain things with setbacks, that is also a possibility. So.
Sandy, I'm sorry. I just, thank you for the explanation and the putting a point on the fact that the, there is no setback specific to city limits. But to that end, it makes me curious about the setback from a county boundary line. In my opinion, it seems redundant because a non-participating landowner, whether it's a Douglas County resident, an Osage County resident, Franklin, Jefferson, Johnson, would have the same option for the 25, or assumption of the 2,500 setback unless they opted differently. Really, my question though is, are there other examples of regulations around land use where we specifically have a setback from county lines? I know there are some specific to city limits or urban growth boundaries perhaps, but do we have anything that's specific to county lines that you're aware of?
I cannot think of one.
Okay. Just curious for context. Thank you.
I think, yeah. And I think that this, again, this was something that the public felt very strongly about. And so the ad hoc committee and the planning commission wanted to be responsive to that, to recognize that there are adjacent property owners in, in county governments outside of Douglas County that have this concern. So what this does is this forecasts to any future applicant, this is a thing. So it's kind of belt and suspenders because a property line and a county boundary are, you know, it has that same 25-foot setback with the exception, if somebody has a large piece of ground right on the county line, hmm, it could be closer.
It also is part of that, if I'm reading this right, would be that if, if someone lives just across the line into Osage or Franklin or Johnson or any other county line and they, they know that they will have 2,500 feet, but they can't then choose to have 1,500 feet and be paid for it. So like that then knocks them out of that running for that. And that may be a, a personal choice that they, that we've been taken away. So just a trade-off there.
We've got a couple of slides. I think there was one in the memo attachment. This is really trying to document how these things start fitting together. A project boundary, where a turbine would be located, what those kinds of setbacks are. This graphic was really originally done with the idea or the expectation that you'd have a 1,500-foot setback. Since it's not to scale, we can change the numbers however we want, and then that would be a 2,500-foot setback. The point being that anything that is in that beige color would be a non-participating property. So you don't get to overlap components of your project onto those pieces that are non-conforming. Just, you know, again, this exhibit kind of that we were talking about, the county boundary, just kind of what that might look like. It would be applicable to the entirety of Douglas County. And you're correct, this is probably the only use in the code that would have this kind of a thing. So. Height, we mentioned earlier in height that we put it back into plain language. Maximum height is 600 feet is what has been recommended to you. Heard from the industry that, you know, these things can come in all different sizes and heights depending on what kind of mast or tower you have, what kind of blade length you have. There's not a direct correlation between how they're manufactured and, because they're in meters and we're talking about feet, so there may have to be some engineering done on the developer side to be able to meet this standard. Okay? So it does cap it as a, as a maximum height. This 50-foot ground clearance should allow for normal agricultural activity to occur. If, if we're missing the mark on that, I haven't heard it, that ground clearance could be changed if, if there's a particular need for it under a particular turbine for a particular project. Okay. Just comparatively, how some of these things are in height. Camp O'Neill, 120 feet, St. Louis Arch. There's a structure in Kansas City and Cece could tell you off the top of her head what that building is. I cannot. So obviously, we're shorter than the highest building in Kansas City or the St. Louis Arch, taller than the Camp O'Neill and many other kind of similar structures. But that, these things are massive. That, that's what they are. So this is a recognition of that. Okay. Just another design graphic to again, kind of help understand what some of these setbacks look like at a project scale. It's a little bit cartoony. This graphic was prepared by Carl Bauer and I was incredibly impressed with it. I think it really helps to demonstrate what some of those setbacks look like for this project. The gold line.
Yeah. I, I really did like that graphic. It was very helpful. And it has the four different areas. So three miles for Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, 2,500 for, for particip-, non-participating, 1,500 for participating. And then it has that 660 feet to roads. And so I was curious between if a, what becomes a participating landowner can choose or get paid or whatever to have a turbine come within 1,500 feet, but it can come within 660 feet of a road. So I was just curious, like, and I know the 660 feet matches the current regs that we have. That's 110% of the height, which was, you know, and, and I just don't know what the, the safety distance is between if someone chooses as, as their, you know, what they consider to be a safe distance, if they consider it to be less than 1,500 feet, have we said that they can't? Or that 660 feet to a road seems odd when it's twice that to a structure?
Um, it is. I think the theory is that you're spending time in your structure, whereas on the road, you're passing by. Have we heard of instances where something came flying and struck a motorist? Yes. The, the odds of that are so incredible. Even one instance is, is frightening. But the other thing, I think it was the Audubon Society gave us some preliminary comment and they actually, in a lot of ways, favor the shorter setback closer to the road because that has less impact further into the agricultural area. So you're able to make better use of existing pavement, existing roads for access. So I thought that was an interesting juxtaposition of, of this. If, if this is what, you know, the, the commission wants to look at these kinds of things and say, hey, we think it should be more from roads, that, that's definitely something that we can change.
And I'm just curious, and, and for me, the trade-off would be the amount of gravel needed. So the further you go from the road, and that's one of the questions that I hopefully will get to or may not, in terms of like what that does to our township's road budget when we have this, in this amount of gravel and how do we supply that?
Yeah.
But that can save for another time.
Okay. Performance standards. I didn't stop for questions. I think we're, we're kind of doing okay?
You've got about 10 minutes left or 15 minutes left because we're at 5:02.
Okay. I'm going to try and move through this very quickly. A lot of these things we've talked about previously, the performance standards, again, tie back to those key factors, all the things that we're talking about in these studies, making sure that the project is operating the way that they said it was going to operate it and, and the way that it's approved through that conditional use permit. So the visual impact, one of those, those performance standards was about kind of shadow flicker. This regulation proposes a pretty strict limit on that. No more than 15 hours per year and no more than 15 minutes per day to a non-participating And if that means the tower has to be powered down to be able to meet that, they can do that. These kinds of pieces of this project are mathematically modeled. We know exactly what the answer is for these things. So I think everybody felt confident saying, yeah, we can say, boom, here's, here's what our measure is. This gets back to the radar activated lighting system. We talked a little bit about that. Sound, sound was a lot of discussion. This is really just trying to highlight how that sound is measured to the property line or to the occupied structure. Whether that occupied structure is a barn or a house or business or school, you have a lower level of sound that can be emitted from that use to that structure than to the, so slightly higher at the property line. So this follows up on some of those environmental pieces. Project would be subject to local floodplain development permit process. If they are, if they are proposing something that is encumbered by floodplain development permit, we're going to push for those kinds of projects to not be doing that. They probably have an interest in not doing that. No disruption to telecommunication equipment. Cultural, historical and archaeological features shall be avoided. That means protected within there. And those would be identified through that review process, through the approval process. We're going to want to make sure that, that they're meeting those kinds of standards. Those, some of those things tie back to the existing regulations of what is sensitive lands. So that's another callback to existing pieces. This gets into some of the processes, what has to happen for extraordinary event response, what some of the applicant pieces are, what some of the county. Now, extraordinary event is going to be, I mean, there may have to be, you know, that initial 911 call, they're going to respond to that emergency, whatever that is. We know that if somebody's in the tower and they're having a medical emergency, that those staff probably have to have some self-training in terms of how to help each other and how to get out of that structure. You know, whether or not we would send fire personnel up into these things would probably be really contingent. I think what I've heard, if there is a fire of the structure, people are going to evacuate. Their, the fire is probably going to try to just manage the site and, and protection and probably not going to have aerial drops of water or whatever that is. But the applicant will have had to provide the necessary studies and plans and potentially equipment to the responding fire departments to be able to handle those, those types of emergency responses.
So Sandy, while we're on that, what has been the staff outreach to the fire chiefs in the county? And will that, if that hasn't happened yet, can that happen before the first? I mean, I have, I have contacts and I can reach out, but it seemed like that was maybe not the right method.
So, yeah, that, that was a discussion and I'm going to, I'm going to mix up names here very quickly.
I can probably supply them if need be.
We, we reached out initially to, I think, Chief Baxter. And that was an error on my end, thinking that, that as the consolidation had happened, I misunderstood that that consolidation happened for all of the townships.
I know we don't have a whole lot of time, so I just want to.
Yeah.
The chief's, next chief's meeting isn't until after the first, it's on the second. So it would have to be an, an outreach that is outside of their regular meeting time. Is that something that you can do? Is that something that I should do?
Let's talk. And I, I can.
Staff will take care of it.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Decommissioning reclamation. Again, this is a section that was substantially expanded in the, in the regulations. I know there's all kinds of questions about bonding and those kinds of pieces. Those would be set out in the code. We've worked a lot with legal counsel to make sure that we've got that right. So I do feel pretty confident that, that we've got the necessary tools in place. It will be with an actual application that they get executed. Okay. Once a conditional use permit is approved, it has two years to begin construction. If they fail to get under construction within two years, then it's going to be a valid application. They have to go back and start from the beginning. And this is one of those things where we've heard back and forth from the applicant. Well, I've got to get this before I can get that, but I got to get that before I can get this. And so we've said, you got two years. And that's, that's not unusual for other conditional use permits.
In terms of decommissioning, so if the CUP goes 25 years, from when it's approved to when it's done is 25 years. So if they're planning to decommission or if they're needing to decommission, when would they need to start that? Because it can't start at 25 years because that would overstay their welcome. It would have to start in three years?
You know, I don't think we thought of it in that particular term. I think decommissioning was at the life of the project, then decommissioning happens. So.
Sometimes we have a decommissioning plan that outlines that.
Yes, yes. But I think that's different than the question being asked.
So that might be a question that we come back to, that we stack.
That, that could be something that could be clarified. We had not, the language is not drafted that the decommissioning has to be complete before the 25 years. Okay. I'm going to skip over the rest of this. We can come back to it. You can power down, decommission either one turbine or the whole project within that lifecycle of the project. So we talk about what those things are, what abandonment looks like. That was, that is something that is expressly defined in the code. So that is the presentation of what the regulations say. I'm sorry, it took longer than I wanted to. Yep.
We interrupted you very often.
No, that's okay.
And not as often as we wanted to.
It was designed to do that.
All right. Commissioners, I have probably a quick list that I would run through, but I would defer to both of you first.
I just have one question, Sandy, and it doesn't need to be answered today. It might be something for the first. You know, we can add on a conditional use permit, we can add conditions. I'd be interested in understanding if the applicant has any ability to ask for a variance, do something different that came up in our solar application? You know, what would be the steps they would take? What would be the sequence of events? Do they get that variance first before they come or do they apply for the CUP? So again, you can answer that on the first if you like, or if you have a few thoughts. But I want to make sure commissioner, all of commissioner release questions.
Very quickly, the condition, the county commission has expressed authority in this regulation to, and I think it's, I can't remember if it's height or setback, it's one of them that comes to this body. And that was a discussion that we had was that perhaps those kinds of things should maybe not be posed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that they should be coming to this body. So that's the expectation of the code.
I will jump in. Thanks for that question, Commissioner Kelly. I'm interested to understand along with that, I guess if there are any, any particularities that are, that are definitive, that applicants could not ask for a variance? Does that question make sense? So like, I mean, anything specifically within these regulations that are non-negotiable, I suppose, and therefore they, they would be informed that there are certain things they could not ask for a variance about? Or is it pretty open-ended and it's just more a matter of whether it go, whether the process takes it to BZA or the. takes it to BZA or the process takes it to us?
I don't think there's anything in here, and I'd have to go back and do a word search. I don't think there's anything in there that prevents them from asking for a variance from any of the design standards. Procedures they cannot ask for variances from, land use they cannot ask a variance from. Design standard would be something that they could go to, come back to this body as part of their application, requesting a waiver reduction of variance.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Whatever I don't get to, I will give to you in writing and hopefully maybe organize it a little bit better at that time. So the state changed the regulations so that that lighting only has to be on when the planes are nearby unless the FAA says it's too close to something. So do we have a map or can we get something from the FAA that says where that responsive lighting can happen versus where it can't? I think that would be curious to have. And setbacks from private airstrips, I'm sure the FAA weighs in on that. And we have quite a few in the county, so I'd like to know. The decommissioning bond, which we didn't spend a lot of time on it and I will go back and reread it again, just like how much that differs from solar since I could dismantle most of a solar field with the tools I have in my car, not so much with the wind turbines. So like how different that is one from another? So just, we're learning from the two processes, but that's one that I am just, because it would take specialized people in order to make that happen that may or may not be available to us. What are the possible burden bat mitigation strategies that, whether we have to write them in or just be aware of them? Nothing in here says that turbines need to be shut down during like ice forming conditions, like when they're forecasted for that. And that's something that I learned on one of my fact finding missions. How are oil leaks addressed? And we don't have anything in here addressing camping or, I know we have camping regulations, but like as part of the whole CUP, we talk about laydown yards and other things that are, what do you call it? The business office and something that comes in there. But like the construction personnel housing, a lot of times that is like a camp, a temporary campground that happens on private property and just making sure that our regs, which when we talk about camping, we're usually not talking about that. Jump ahead. Oh yeah, so camping sites and batch plants, which are another possibility of happening. Usually those things would have their own process. In this case, they'd have to be wrapped up probably into this process. That's most of my high level. Oh, in decommissioning, can landowners, them to stay there? And if they're being designed for the 80,000 pound gross vehicular weight, which it spells out in the regs, do they also meet other design standards for a township road? And that's probably, probably part of the stormwater plan, like how does water in culverts and such work there? And then does that then leave that ground after the CUP open for further development? Like do those become legal roads or not? Or do they just get taken out automatically? That gets me through the high level ones.
Okay. So very quickly, on the access roads, access drives, I tried to not use the word road because that does have that connotation that it's public somehow. If it, if the property owner wanted to retain it, that needs to be discussed as part of the CUP. So if they want to keep it. Whether or not it could be designed to be a future township road, yes, again, that would have to be part of that conditional use permit. And then how does that transfer from a private access drive to a future township road to accommodate development of some sort? Yes, that could be part of the conditional use permit. The expectation would be it would be removed unless specifically approved to stay. That's the default.
And that would need to be in the original CUP?
Yes.
Or could that be an application that comes after the fact towards the decommissioning?
Yes.
Either one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because another one, are springs going to be mapped as part of that environmental impact assessment? There are a lot of upland springs in some of our windier areas.
It could be, yeah.
And we talked about having, having the tower number on the towers and also a phone number in case of incidents, but will that also be on the gate or the fence so that people, because people wouldn't necessarily have access to that property, that if there were a problem, they would know who to call?
Yes, yeah. There needs to be reasonable contact information available to see what is happening and call it in as necessary.
One of the things I think chiefs will ask is like, how does the fire department access? Because I assume that those gates are locked in ways that farm gates typically aren't. Sometimes they are.
And we'd probably be looking at that as a specific conditional use permit. You know, we do those kinds of things in site plans in the city where there is a particular kind of lock that is used so that everybody has the master key or the master code or whatever to be able to get through those gates. So, and as that technology has changed over time, we've done those kinds of things as well. So that would be more explicit to a particular application than in code.
In the performance standards, it talks about mitigating impacts. And I think the intention is to mitigate both anticipated and actual impacts. So not just after the fact, but anticipating ahead of time. And then especially, I think this was in terms of the road agreement, that like all of the anticipated impacts would be thought of ahead of time, paid for ahead of time in the road agreement so that it wouldn't come out of like the tax base. We've used quite a bit of time. We normally go until five o'clock. It's now 5:20. Commissioners, what other questions specifically would you like to have for staff that they can come back with? And there'll be.
I do not have any.
There'll be many more that I'm sure come in the process on the first. So with that, Sarah, do we have any other wrap up comments?
No, just a reminder that, you know, written public comment will be accepted through end of business on Monday, the 29th. And staff will get, try to get this updated in advance of the meeting, but we'll be doing the best we can because it's a pretty tight turnaround. So if not, it'll be reviewed at the meeting on the first.
All right. Well, thank you everyone for being here. That concludes our work session. So this meeting is adjourned until our business meeting that starts at 5:30. Thank you all.